Received into and made part of the record, is there a motion to approve the monthly board report?
Mayor, I motion to approve the monthly board report as presented.
Second.
There is a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Next, Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
How to unmute my mic. Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Finbush.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve the monthly board report passes by a vote of seven zero. Item three.
Public housing authority write-off of uncollectible accounts receivable, resolution number PHA two zero two one dash zero zero one.
The city manager's communication number twenty-three dated January twentieth is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one by number and title only.
Resolution number PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one relating to public housing authority, authorizing the write-off of certain uncollectible accounts and declaring an emergency.
What is the board's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve PHA twenty, I thought it was two oh one dash zero zero one for seventeen thousand dollars and one hundred and thirty-six in write-offs.
Do we have a second? There is a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Next, Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Arrow Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Finbush.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
PHA twenty twenty, um, resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one passes by a vote of seven zero. Item four.
Public housing authority, public housing program flat rent adoption, resolution number PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two.
City manager's communication number twenty-four dated January twentieth is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two by number and title only.
Resolution number PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two relating to public housing authority, authorizing the adoption of the flat rents for the public housing program and setting an effective date.
What is the board's pleasure?
I move to pass and adopt resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two.
Second. There is a motion in a second, any further discussion? I do see, uh, council member Kazachik's hand-ups.
Ma'am, I have a question about this. We're proposing to raise rents from anywhere from two to twenty-two percent. At the same time, we're facing significant evictions. How are we justifying the increase? Is it like HUD required? It just feels counter-
Mayor, council member, uh, Kazachik, I will tell you that is, um, based on, on the market, uh, we are required to do a market analysis. We have seen, uh, increases in those bedroom sizes. Um, it would not take effect until their annual recertification. Um, and again, the flat rents often are much lower than the family's thirty percent of their income. Uh, so they're, they typically are paying less than thirty percent of their income for these flat rents. If that's their choice, um, what we see is most people, um, go with the income-based rents because that way they're sticking with thirty percent. But if they're on the flat rents, typically they're paying much less than their thirty percent.
Are we required to raise these flat rents by HUD rules or is it just, are we just required to do the market study?
Um, so I think that's a, uh, I would say that HUD requires that we do a market study. Um, I don't think we're required to raise the rent, so we, we could acknowledge that there, there was increases, but we choose to keep the rents, um, level. So that is an option, if that is the will of the Board of Commissioners.
What's the impact on your department if we were to keep them where they are?
It does affect, uh, you know, uh, like most landlords, we do, um, rely on revenue, rent revenue to help support, uh, the, the, the units. So, but it's only, again, uh, it would affect about seventy-six, uh, households out of the fifteen hundred, um, families that we have.
So it'll be a pretty, pretty diminutive, pretty de minimis impact on your budget.
Yes.
Um, well, I, I guess I'm interested in hearing my colleague's thoughts on it. Um, I'm, I'm hesitant.
Mm-hmm. How many, how many, um,
CD plans?
Situals did you say were going to possibly be affected by this?
Yes, I believe, let me just, um, we have, just to make sure, seventy-six that are on a flat rent. Um, it doesn't, uh, the increases vary based on what bedroom size that they're in, but it's, uh, seventy-six families that it would affect.
And you say that, uh, flat rents usually stay below the thirty percent preferred, um, percentage of, of their, you know, of their income.
Correct. So if it's income-based, we look at, um, what their thirty percent is. Often they choose the flat rent because their thirty percent would exceed what the, what the flat rent is if they were on the income-based, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Liz, why, why are we doing this? Is it a requirement by HUD?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Finbush, it is a requirement that we do this annually. Again, I think the, what council member Kazachik brought up was the requirement is that we do a, a market analysis um, and ensure that we are charging reasonable and, uh, market comparable rents. Um, so on some of those units, we found that we were a little bit lower than the market and that was the reason for the increase.
So we have a eviction moratorium on here because people can't pay their rents of their, and they don't have a job. How are we going to impose this on them?
Uh, Councilmember Finbush, if I may, I think that both council, you and, and councilmember Kazachik bring up a very, very important point. I would suggest if you all want to consider a motion that we not, um, you know, the, the study has been done.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the recommendation that HUD wants us to do every year.
Correct.
So what I would recommend is, uh, that we consider a motion for us not to move forward with elevating the, the rent payments to these families.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if you'd like-
I'm sorry, there's, yeah, there's a motion in a second already. I'll offer a substitute motion that we maintain the existing flat rents, um, for this calendar year until we're required to do this market study once again.
May I, uh, interject something? We did on some of those lower the flat rents. So I would, um, recommend that if we're going to make a change, it would be just to not increase any of the flat rents and allow decrease on the other units.
That, that's fair. That's, that's a good catch.
That's excellent.
I'll second that.
So there is a substitute motion and a second with the recommendation of keeping the flat rents the same. And then those that are lowering to let them lower.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, no, great catch, councilmember Kazachik. Vice Mayor?
I just have a quick question. Does this affect just the units that we manage and own? Or does this affect, uh, other landlords who manage section eight housing in the city?
Um, Madam Mayor, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Cunningham, uh, this will only affect the public housing units we own. And so the, the, these are the, we're the landlord on this determining the rent.
That's fine.
And I, and, and I would just add that if anyone is in a position where they're unable to pay rent because of income, we, just as a reminder, we do lower. Um, they have, uh, we will immediately change their, their rent requirements. Um, if they're at a flat rent and they lose their income, we will go to an income-based. So if they're at zero income, we would, um, make sure that they're, they're not paying rent. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Great. Thank you. Question.
Alrighty, so, uh, there's a substitute motion, a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so, um, Mr. Clerk, I just need some, um, some guidance here in terms of the resolution that we have in front of us in terms of item four. So resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two, um, is it a fail? Because I think it's a different action that we've taken.
So, Your Honor, the resolution is written, didn't pass, um, but there was direction to use part of that resolution going forward to lower those rents, so, uh, I believe the city attorney will, uh, correct that resolution to reflect that. Uh, then we can move forward.
Alrighty, I see Mr. Rankin.
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Clerk. That's exactly what we'll do is, um, we'll revise the resolution to be consistent with the direction as given.
Okay, perfect. So that's, uh, that is the direction. Thank you so much. And thank you for catching that, councilmember Kazachik. Item five.
Public housing authority, public housing program flat rent adoption, please.
City manager's communication number twenty-five dated January twentieth is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three by number and title only.
Resolution number PHA dash twenty, twenty twenty-one zero zero three relating to public housing authority adopting the payment standards for the Housing Choice Bachelor Program, setting an effective date and declaring an emergency.
What is the board's pleasure?
Uh, Mayor, I motion to pass and adopt resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Next, Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Finbush.
Aye.
Arrow Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Resolution PHA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three passes by a vote of seven zero. Item six.
Approval of public housing authority minute.
City manager's communication number twenty-six dated January twentieth is received into and made part of the record. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty?
No move.
There is a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Next, Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Arrow Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Finbush.
Aye.
The motion to approve the minutes of the December eighth, twenty twenty meeting passes by a vote of seven zero. Item seven.
Adjournment.
The meeting of the Board of Commissioners is adjourned. The mayor and council will now convene our regular meeting. Council will stand in session. Thank you so much, Liz, really appreciate it. Council will stand in session, roll call.
Next, Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Durham.
Aye, here.
Here.
Mr. Finbush.
Here.
Mr. Kazachik.
Here.
Arrow Merrill.
Here. Item two.
Invitation on appointments to boards committees and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marufo, staff member of the, at the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Mayor O'Meara. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Let us pray. Lord, I pray for all government officials and especially for the leaders of my own country. I pray for the president that he may conduct the affairs of national government with wisdom, bravery, and true justice. I pray for the members of Congress that they may truly represent the needs of the people and work in harmony for the advancement of all men, women, and children. I pray for the judges that rule the courts of our land, that they may balance justice with mercy and civil law with divine mandates. Grant all of our national, state, and local leaders the gift of wisdom, justice, counsel, and fortitude, that they may conduct the affairs of man in accord with the will of God. Grant to all men the gift of respect for lawful authority, justly exercised, that we may live as a united people, one nation under God. May all the governments of the world seek to reconcile power with the needs of society. May they all strive to form bonds of unity between countries that we may one day share a united world of prosperity and peace. Amen.
Amen.
Item two B.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City manager's communication number fifteen dated January twentieth is received into and made part of the record. Do I have a motion to appoint Marie Purth Tree to the Citizens Water Advisory Committee?
Summon.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. I would like to thank Ms. Purth Tree for your willingness to serve the city of Tucson. We really appreciate it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, item three.
Mayor and council reports summary of current events.
City manager's communication number sixteen dated January twentieth is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. They, these are to be current events or activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have any, anything to report at this time?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor.
We'll start with word one and then go down the, down the line.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a quick reminder to everyone to stay vigilant, continue wearing their mask and, and stay home, you know, uh, when you can. Um, if you're feeling sick, that we have, um, the partnership with Pima County to continue to allow for ongoing, um, testing. Um, and you can get more information at the Pima County Health website. And then in a partnership with the U.S. Water Alliance, um, Water Arts and Culture Accelerator, Tucson Water is issuing an open request for qualifications for artists and cultural contributors um, who based on artistic achievement, um, and on an understanding of the community can lead the development of new cultural strategies for improving community engagement and building public trust around the topic of water. So I just wanted to make sure that folks in the community knew that, um, the request for qualifications, um, was open.
Vice Mayor?
Just want to remind everybody that testing sites are open at multiple locations and now vaccine sites are open at multiple occasion, uh, multiple locations. It's still a process. Um, it's not going to happen overnight. But as long as you check back at the website every day for vaccine, ultimately, uh, as eligibility moves down the list, everybody will get on to, uh, to get vaccinated, keep up your social distancing. And look, we've got, hopefully we've only got about six months left of this, folks, so stay, stay strong. We got this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Durham?
I can't unmute. I can't unmute my mic.
There you-
Nothing to report.
I can hear you.
Nothing to report. Thank you so much, councilmember Durham. Uh, councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to take a moment. Last week, um, as many of you know, we lost a resident from Ward Four that many Tucsonans know. Um, he was a city of Tucson employee as well as a former TUSD board member. I'm talking about Mr. Michael Hicks. Um, I met him on the campaign trail when we were running against each other for this, this seat and- And, um, we talked often about ways that we could work together to make the city of Tucson great regardless of who won. And he was always kind and respectful. And I just wanted to take a moment to, um, send our deepest condolences from me and my team to his family, um, to his friends and to the colleagues at the city of Tucson that knew him and worked with him and are grieving his loss. And as you all have said so far, just a reminder to continue to wear your masks and, and do everything you can to stay safe right now. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Finbres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate Joe Biden in becoming the nation's forty-sixth president today. And I want to congratulate Kamala Harris in becoming the nation's first woman, black, and Asian vice president. On Saturday, June sixteenth, the Public Gardens Neighborhood Association held its thirty-first annual Public Gardens Neighborhood Association Martin Luther King Junior Virtual Breakfast Event. For thirty years, our community has enjoyed and supported the Public Gardens Neighborhood Association Martin Luther King Breakfast held at the Boys and Girls Club. Ward Five's Public Gardens Neighborhood Association is the only neighborhood in Tucson that puts on an annual event to honor the work and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. In the thirty years of this event, the Public Gardens Breakfast has raised funds for educational scholarships, school supplies, textbooks, and computers for students in the Public Gardens and surrounding neighborhoods. The COVID nineteen forced the neighborhood to get extra creative in its efforts to continue this tradition, working with me, my office, and myself and the city of Tucson communications team. The thirty-first annual event was streaming video that is available at the city of Tucson YouTube program. I want to especially thank our city manager, Michael Ortega, Andy Squire, and Lenny Barzuto for the, of the city's communication team, who made this video happen in ten days. Thank you both for your work on this, on this first video of its kind. Joining me as part of the video was our mayor, Madam, Rahina Romero, city manager, Mike Ortega, who spoke about the importance of Martin Luther King Junior's, his work and his legacy. I want to thank them both for being part of this first video of this event. District Two State Representative Andrea DeLassandro, the Pima County Supervisor Matt Heinz, were also part of the groundbreaking video for this community event. Thank them both for the, being part of this video. I want to thank James Christopher, who fund, who founded and has chaired the breakfast committee since its inception for his work and commitment to the community. I want to thank Pastor Brady Scott for his inspiring words, Tracy Hawken and Grace Temple for the, for the use of the church to record aspects of this video.
Thank you. Two four six.
I want to thank Pastor Otis Brown for his participation in moving words, as well as Terry Sparks, Randy Sparks, and Tanya Williams for the renditions of the National Anthem and the Black National Anthem. I also want to thank those who made donations to the Public Gardens Neighborhood Association MLK Breakfast for scholarships for young students and from the sound of surrounding neighborhoods. A sad note, this meet, mayor and council meeting will be the last meeting for Joyce Garland, the city of Tucson's chief financial officer and assistant city manager, who has retired from, from her service with the city of Tucson. Joyce Garland worked, began working with the city of Tucson in October of two thousand as a fund accountant at the finance department. It wasn't long until Joyce had the opportunity to promote to principal accountant and fiscal finance manager during the fiscal year twenty, two thousand eight, two thousand nine economic downturn. The finance director at that time noticed Joyce's experience and financial skills and appointed her to fill her, the vacant budgetary administrative position on an interim basis. From the budget administration position, Joyce Garland was promoted by then city manager, Richard Miranda, to budget director. When Mike Ortega came on board, he asked me to go, to be the CFO, asked her to be the CFO assistant city manager. I want to thank Joyce for her work and commitment for the city of Tucson. Her knowledge and expertise will be missed. Enjoy the next chapter of your life, Joyce, and thank you again. And on Tuesday, January twelfth, David Collin Malowski and Sean Coak with the Southern Arizona Homeowners, Homeowners, Home Builders Association delivered blankets to the Ward Five council office to help those in need. These blankets were given to Sister Jose's Women's Center. I want to thank them both for their efforts in collecting these blankets. We are one city, one county, one team. And a sad note, because of the COVID nineteen, we lost Michael Hicks, former school board member. We lost Eddie Swatness and Father Charles Cosio. So again, I echo what my colleague said, wear your mask, practice social distancing, wash your hands, and get tested and get the vaccine when it comes out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Finbres. Councilmember Kasachek?
Just real quick, i- if none of you have seen the CNN show on Kamala Harris as the special, it is absolutely riveting and it shares what a quality person she is and her family. It's an hour long. It's a CNN special and it's, I'm sure it's, um, you can find it easily and they're gonna, they'll rerun it for sure. And secondly, if you missed the poet laureate who gave the, um, thing today, Amanda, what was her last name? Go on CNN dot com and find it. It was absolutely cool.
She absolutely stole the show. I absolutely agree with you. Uh, unbelievable young woman, um, that just delivered, uh, the most wonderful and amazing message, uh, through a young person's soul. Um, I, what I wanted to, um, discuss is that, you know, today is inauguration day and, and we have a new president and a new vice president. We have, uh, made history as a country, electing the first woman, um, uh, of African American descent and Indian descent, daughter of immigrants, uh, to one of the highest posts of our nation. And we should be very, very proud of ourselves as a country, uh, for taking that action. But in her own words, Vice President Harris has said that she is the first, but she will not be the last. And so, um, you know, millions of little girls, um, around the country and around the world are seeing our new vice president and thinking that could be them. And so it's, it's just unbelievable, uh, valuable, um, really historic, uh, uh, place that we are now. And of course, it's two thousand and twenty-one and it's, it's late, right? There's a lot of work that we still, still need to do in terms of, um, equitable representation in our government, in all levels of government. But, you know, I, I was watching as, as much as I could, the inauguration and, um, it was a solemn occasion because of the pandemic that we're living through as a country. But it really, it really gave me hope because it, once again, our democracy has prevailed. And, um, there was a transfer of power, uh, to, to a new president and vice president. And I'm, I'm very, very hopeful that, um, that we will be able to, to work with this administration and, and push on the issues that Tucsonans really care about. So, um, I absolutely agree, Councilmember Kasachek. I mean, Amanda, Amanda, I don't remember her last name, but Amanda, uh, stole the show.
Anna Gorman, Your Honor.
Gorman. Wonderful. Beautiful. Uh, thank you so much, everyone, and, uh, let's move on to item four.
City Managers Report Summary of Current Events.
City Managers Communication Number Seventeen, dated January twentieth, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to, uh, remind the council that we're trying to schedule the follow-up retreat for next week. I know the city clerk has sent out a, a, a survey or placeholder for next week. So please, if you could get back to, to Roger and let him know when that, uh, uh, will work for you also, we can be prepared for that. Uh, I'm going to take the privilege of the microphone, Mayor, and, and turn over the mic to Mike Rankin for a couple of quick comments. So, Mike.
Thank you. Mayor. And I just, uh, before, uh, Mike speaks about Joyce, I just want to say very quickly, it's been one of the great, um, privileges of my career to work, uh, with Joyce. Um, Joyce, you have helped guide us through some very difficult times. Um, and I have to say, I'm not sure that I've ever worked with anyone, uh, that I've laughed with more than, uh, than with you, Joyce. So thank you for everything. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, so Mayor, I'm going to again take the privilege of the microphone. Uh, today, unfortunately for us, is Joyce Garland's last, uh, meeting. Now she will be at the retreat. I have asked her to, to, to help out with the retreats, so she'll be here next week. But I thought appropriate to recognize, uh, her accomplishments. And, uh, first of all, I think we all know her as the, the financial, uh, I call her the financial wizard. Uh, and I'll tell you, uh, her, uh, ability to translate very complex issues, uh, in language that not only I understand, but we can convey to you as mayor and council is, is absolutely incredible. Uh, I've watched her with the rating agencies and, uh, actually pushed back on the rating agencies and talked through it in a very, uh, firm, uh, but professional manner, uh, to the point where she actually challenged them at increasing our ratings. And as you know, we've seen, uh, incredible improvement in our ratings, uh, over the last few years that, you know, using, uh, really Joyce's leadership and taking her lead. She was instrumental in, in that. She also was a, a very integral part of the many ballot, ballot initiatives, Prop one oh one, Prop four oh seven, Prop four oh nine, um, and, and then the permanent base adjustment. But I also want, uh, to make sure that absolute credit is given her over the pension obligation bonds. Uh, we discussed that, gosh, probably a year ago. And, uh, I remember we, we, uh, we kind of talked and Joyce was a little nervous over it. Uh, but her leadership and perseverance on this is why we're having the conversations that we're having around that. Um, and I wanted to make sure that, that the council knew that. In addition, every time we talked about the budget, one of the things that she always brought up was employee compensation. What are we going to do for employees? What can we do for employees? Uh, you know, that, that was part of the conversation we had earlier. Um, but it, it's really, uh, an amazing opportunity to work with someone, uh, who, as Mike mentioned, can make you laugh. Uh, but not only is she, uh, amazing at the finances, uh, she's been a trusted friend, colleague, and mentor to the staff. Uh, she's a strong and influential leader, uh, and now she's a grandma. So she's going to play grandma at home and, and, uh, really looking forward to hearing that, uh, those stories down the road. But, uh, Joyce, we absolutely wish you the best in your next endeavor. Uh, we know this next chapter in your life is going to be awesome and you're going to be amazing in all the things that, that you do. But Mayor, again, we just wanted to take a, a couple of minutes to recognize Joyce for, uh, really the twenty years plus that she has spent with, uh, the city of Tucson. And, and again, wish her much, much happiness and success in her next chapter. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Manager, absolutely. I want to add my, you know, my voice into thanking Joyce for her service and everything that she has helped guide mayor and council through these, through these many years. Thank you so much for your service, Joyce. And I'm so happy that, you know, you're starting a new chapter in your life, that you're going to enjoy your grandchild, uh, much more. And I just invite you to say a couple of things, if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, uh, members of the council and everyone here tonight. You know, this is really a moment of sadness for me. Uh, my last council session, uh, been doing this a, a pretty long time, but I've been working for, and I will say, over forty-five years. And I think, um, twenty of those years have been with the city of Tucson. So really retirement's not a bad option, right? Um, I don't know if everybody knows, but I really, I started my career as a high school intern in the finance department for the city that I grew up in. And I loved it. I loved the departments. I loved learning about the services that a city organization provides to its community. I was fascinated with their process of community feedback. And just like us, it's always good and bad, right? There's always not a happy medium. Uh, but when my, after my husband and I, um, got married, uh, he, we traveled the country. So I worked at other cities. I, um, actually worked at a quasi-government, which was a library district, and private industries. And then in October two thousand, we came to Tucson and we loved it here. So, um, I started and I joined the city of Tucson. I didn't know what to expect, but what I found was an organization that cares deeply about its community and its employees. I, along with other members of the teams that I have worked with in, have seen a lot of, um, as has been mentioned, crucial financial situations. There was actually a time, uh, when we only had about a week's worth of cash left in the general fund. We saw the markets changing. They went up, they went down, uh, they went up again, and then they came down again. But the team spirit in this organization kept us going. So with your support, we actually achieved great financial milestones. We claimed, climbed out of the recession. Uh, we, we got voter confidence and sales tax and bond initiatives, and we're ma- making it through a pandemic. I couldn't be more proud of what we've been able to do together. I've always felt supported here in every role that I've had. Um, what a great motivator was for me is how this organization actually cares for the professional growth of an employee. Um, as Councilmember Finbres said, I started out as a fund accountant here. I did get my, um, certified public accountant, my CPA license here. Uh, there were three of us taking it, the exam at the same time. I don't think we were real pleasant to be along, to be with during that time, but I can tell you the department, the finance department, was some of our biggest cheerleaders. They supported us and I've always felt that in every role. This place has actually given me such uncountable memories because I've had the privilege of working with such wonderful people. And I want to thank, um, mayor and council, um, the city manager for providing all of us with a very open place to work where we can experiment and learn and then deliver great results to this community. I'll never forget the way I've grown, both personally and professionally. So thank you. Thank you for this privilege.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is the first time I've ever seen you choke up.
Thank you, Joyce. And I am.
Thank you.
Say, uh, Ortega is going to miss you because you've kept his ass out of a sling so many times, we can't count him.
There's no doubt about that. I've.
Uh, we've made a great team.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we move on to item five.
Liquor license applications report from city manager.
City Managers Communication Number Eighteen, dated January twentieth, is received into and made part of the record. Are there any liquor licenses to report at this time?
Your Honor, we have no liquor license applications this evening.
Oh, wow. Item six.
Call to the audience.
Uh, do we have anyone, uh, wishing to speak at this time?
Your Honor, I do see two individuals online that have requested to speak.
All righty, so let me, let me just make sure that I, that I give the, um, uh, the public notice at this time. The public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than thirty minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. Mr. Clerk, can you read the first individual that is waiting to be, um, called on?
Yes, Your Honor, we have Dale Warner.
Mr. Warner?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Warner. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Honorable Mayor, Council, thank you. I have lived in Tucson for fifty-six years. My wife and I have lived in our current house now for forty-one years. This area is Enchanted Hills. I encourage you to vote no on C nine eighty-one forty-five scene, thirty-sixth and LaToya Boulevard. And I do not support the city's use of flexible lot development as a tool for infill development. In the use of FOD, planning and development staff have routinely come up with creative interpretations of the zoning code that conveniently benefits FOD projects pushed by landlorders, even though UDC Section three five, three D three requires a zoning application to conform to adopted plan policies. You, Mayor, honorable mayor and council, get no vote on zoning, just the FOD projects. get no vote on zoning, just the FLD projects itself. FLD allows, all FLD adds a new definition to high-definition housing to maximum-definition housing. A land lawyer is very clear that this is an FLD bonus of home densities higher than they could normally get in the build areas. This type of maximum-density housing is not a fit for this area, never has been, and has been voted no for 41 years by all mayor and councils. A land lawyer and current land owner first filed back in 2004, over 16 years ago, and had pushed this already. An email to land lawyer Carrie Suvodin dated 12/6/2005 indicated that the city's attorney's office and the city staff's opinion that this conditioning of rezoning would never be allowed. Yes, yet we waste our time doing this again and again. This type of this time, they are using FLD. Planning Department staff have come up with interpretation of the zoning code that conveniently benefits this project. So you, mayor and council, get no vote at all on rezoning, but the project itself. How does each, how does this make each of you feel? This is FLD at work. Mayor and council, I has has an obligation to keep its promise of a 41-year-old annexation of restriction on zoning, to keep this type of development out forever. Zone MH1 restricted, but conveniently listed for sale as a 62-acre commercial R1, R2 zoning property for 1.4 million. We need to add this site to Kennedy Park, which would add to the vision and planning of what has been done through this area for the last 40 years by giving back to Tucson residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Clerk, we have another speaker.
Yes, Your Honor, Abreza Ziegler.
Abreza? We can hear you.
Hello. Honorable mayor and council members, as Dale stated, for almost 40 years plus, there have been attempts to either change the zoning or change the zoning condition to the property located on the southwest corner of 36 and LaToya. The opposition by neighbors and neighborhoods in the area has consistently been against installing high-density residential housing clusters on this property. The mayor and council, city attorney, and the rezoning department have rejected past requests, as in 2005, from developers who wish to change the zoning for this purpose. Now there is an attempt to remove the zoning condition of 36,000 square foot minimum lot size, which does not need to go through rezoning department review to comply with plan policies. This current plan for this property is a request for a flexible lot development, Option B, maximum-density infill project. This proposed plan is not compliant with the Tumamaq area plan, nor is it applicable as an infill incentive project. If you have not done so already, please read the opposition document sent to you from the Westside Development Neighborhood Association in November of last year. In communications with Councilmember Lane Santa Cruz, she has indicated that she supports the neighborhoods and their opposition against the removal of the change of the condition established at annexation on this property. I would like to thank Lane Santa Cruz for her engagement, advice, and input during this ongoing process as we work towards saving our open space, preserving the longstanding semi-rural and affordable neighborhood character we have out here, and protecting the environment in this crucial and critical area of the Sonoran Desert. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Abreza. Really appreciate your voice. Item seven.
Your Honor, we do have one more that has joined.
Okay.
Michael Eileen.
Michael?
Hello.
Hi there. We can hear you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor and council, I would like to ask that you approve any pre-annexation and development agreements that have been requested at this time, for I have a piece of property, an escrow, that is closing March 15th, and the deal is contingent upon your approval of my pre-annexation and development agreement that I have submitted. And I'm looking to see if you guys can grandfather any of these in before July 1st, which is your supposed next meeting to approve the PATA agreements. I'm looking to see if there's anything you can do because, like I said, it is contingent upon the sale of this piece of land that I have. What can you do? Thank you.
Do, is that the end of, is all the speakers?
Yeah, that's it. That's it. I, I'm not going to use my three minutes. I'm just looking to see if you guys could make an exception on what what you, you guys put a hold on on these PATA agreements, and it's, it's just not going to work for many people.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, was that the end of the speakers list?
That's all the speakers that I show on.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Then we can move on to item seven.
Consent agenda items A through S.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, the seeming consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is elections, amending Tucson Code, Chapter 12, to comply with state law regarding the threshold for candidate statements of organization. Item C is finance authorizing the business services director to submit the annual expenditure limitation report. Item D is parks and recreation facility development agreement with HSL Properties for improvements to Plaza de la Mesa Park. Item E is real property acquisition of privately-owned property in the Corona de Tucson area for construction of water facilities. Item F is real property purchase and sale agreement with Crystal Classics Fine Minerals America, LLC, for city-owned property located at 465 West St. Mary's Road. That's extended consent agenda, Your Honor.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
So there is a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Pembers?
Aye.
Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Fata Cruz?
Aye.
Kozak?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of seven zero. Item eight.
Public hearing, amending Tucson Code, Chapter 27, relating to a new fee associated with pre-annexation development agreement, hearing ordinance number 11812.
City manager's communication number 27 dated January 20th is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed new fee for pre-annexation and development agreement applications. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than an hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
No, Your Honor.
If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. On all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you were requested to read ordinance 11812 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11812, relating to water, amending the Tucson Code, Chapter 27, Water Article 2, rates and charges by creating a new Section 27.53 to add a new pre-annexation and development agreement application fee and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance 11812, the new $750 PATA fee, including abandoning any registered working well on the property as a result of receiving Tucson Water Service. And I have a question for staff if there's a second to this.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Mr. Timur?
Honorable Mayor, I'm here.
The question, Tim, is we're requiring them to ban, to abandon any registered working well. Does that also prohibit them from drilling any new wells?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, that would also be the intent of that language is to, if there's an existing working well, they would need to officially abandon it and properly abandon it. And it would preclude the the landowner from drilling a well if they don't already have one.
Okay, not only the intent, but explicit in the in the action.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Ready? Any further discussion? Thank you, Tim. So hearing none. All those in favor, or actually, I think we need to roll call with this. So, Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Ms. Fata Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Pembers?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Ordinance 11812 passes by a vote of seven zero. Item nine.
Having the community development approving the People's, the People Communities and Homes Investment Plan, PCHIP, in 2021, call for projects discussion, Resolution Number 23292.
City manager's communication number 21 dated January 20th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23292 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23292, relating to public housing, approving the PCHIP adoption in 2021, call for projects, and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I'd move to pass and adopt Resolution Number 23292.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Pembers?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Fata Cruz?
Aye.
Resolution 23292 passes by a vote of seven zero. Item 10.
Arizona Thrives Alliance.
City manager's communication number 29 dated January 20th is received into and made part of the record. Time has been set aside for discussion of the city of Tucson joining the Arizona Thrives Alliance. I added this about a week and a half ago and wanted to make sure that I brought this initiative to the complete council. I could have added my name as the mayor of the city of Tucson, but I wanted to make sure that we included the full mayor and council and that the city of Tucson could be counted as part of this coalition. The Arizona Thrives Coalition is an initiative launched by the Nature Conservancy that brings together leaders from the public, private, and government sectors to work for clean air and clean energy. The Arizona Thrives Alliance directly aligns with our climate goals outlined in the Climate Emergency. And I'd like to welcome to just talk to the mayor and council for about two, three minutes about what this effort means and why the Nature Conservancy wanted to create the Arizona Thrives Alliance and where we, where we go from here and what, what, what he wants from us today. Pat? Pat Kierar is the Arizona State Director of the TNC's Arizona Thrives Alliance. Thank you so much, Pat, for hanging out and staying till the end. It's your floor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Romero. I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. And before I start, I just want to thank you all for your service. This is a particularly challenging time to be elected official and in public service. So as one citizen, I just want to thank you all for what you're doing. Yes, Arizona Thrives is really the product now of a of a broad group of interests that have come together, communities, business, public interest groups, really to try to chart a path forward as we move from economy based on carbon fuels to one that's driven by clean energy. You know, it's complicated to navigate all of these things. And one of the conclusions that the statewide task force developed was it really needs to be economy-wide. There's been a lot of focus on just utilities in the past. But this really touches almost every aspects of our, of our economy and all of us in, in one form or another. And I think as we've seen through the pandemic, that those that are most vulnerable are essential and frontline workers and their families, the elderly, children. They too suffer the most from heat, poorer quality, and are the least able to adapt. So as we move forward, you know, the alliance believes that it's important we do it in a way that's equitable, affordable, and fair for, for, for all. So again, there are, we believe there are many benefits to that. But I, you've got a briefing paper that kind of outlines that. So I'm happy to really answer any questions. We would appreciate having the city of Phoenix be part of the alliance. We think there's benefits from working together to share what we've learned and to, you know, work with others to help educate, inform, and navigate our way forward. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pat. Really appreciate your waiting till the end of the meeting to present to us. We understand that this alliance is a public-private, you know, where I know that you're getting on board nonprofits and companies and business groups as well as cities. And we, we know that the city of Flagstaff has joined the alliance, as well as the city of Phoenix. Here from Southern Arizona, we have the Southern Arizona Leadership Council, Tucson Electric Power, and other organizations. And basically, what I feel that the importance of, of having the city of Tucson join our sister cities, Flagstaff and Phoenix, in this effort is because it really is trying to get all of us, you know, public and private organizations to align on some guiding principles to tackle really important issues that, that are devastating our state. So with that, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments or, or concerns or any discussion. And if not, I'd like to consider a motion for mayor and council to approve that the city of Tucson join the Arizona Thrives Alliance.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
There's a motion and a second. And Steve, I see your hand up.
Question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Pat, thanks for joining us this evening. Is the advocacy that this coalition is targeting at the state level or the federal level or all of the above? What, what, who exactly is the sort of the target audience of this work?
Yeah, great question. It's really all of the above. And we have agreed that the role of, of the Arizona Thrives in itself is not to lobby, but to inform and try to bring interest together. but to inform and try to bring, uh, interest together to, to, to work this. So, when I say advocacy, it's advocate for the goal, but not, uh, any particular policy. That's really up to the decision-makers, uh, to make. And, uh, you know, for the individual members of the Alliance to decide which ones they want to get behind or, or not, so. But yes, I think, um, you know, at the federal level, there's a potential for stimulus dollars in, in the year ahead to come in, and so to the degree that, uh, Arizonans can and leaders can agree on maybe a set of priorities in addition to the ones that you have locally that we could work together for, we might stand a better chance to accelerate this transition. Um, that's the goal, working together.
It's an interesting assemblage of groups. You've got SALC and TEP, and then some more environmentally, traditionally environmentally sensitive groups. Um, is the process that everyone, you know, you get the Hatfields and the McCoy sitting in the same room at the same time, kind of hammering out policy direction, or explain sort of how this is gonna work?
Yeah, so up to this point, basically what we've done, uh, for example, the idea is that we move away from sort of, uh, if I can, sort of a position-based advocacy to one where we're working together to try to solve problems. So, we brought together a range of people around a particular issue to try to talk through, you know, what are the different, what are the highest priorities to, uh, try to address? So, it's really to try to get away from the forums that often people find themselves in, positioning one against the other to try to just sit down and work through it. Uh, because oftentimes, it's some combination of people's perspectives that, um, that can meet the needs of the most people. So, yeah, that's the, the goal is to, um, I mean, it's really kind of a, a coalition of the willing, if you will. Uh, but, uh, you know, the reason that we don't have, for example, the tribes in rural Arizona is really just because we haven't had with COVID that the time or the resources to broaden this to be fully inclusive statewide, but, um, that's the intent, to make it as inclusive as possible.
Well, I think it's great if there's ever a time where we needed to bring people of perhaps differing perspectives into the same room to have a conversation. This is it. And after the last, well, I won't go there, but anyway, this is it. So, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee?
Mayor, I just want to thank you for bringing this to us because I know, as you said, you could have just moved us forward as a city, but I really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to become educated on this work and be a part of this. And, uh, for Councilmember Kazachik, I am a descendant of the Hatfields, so I appreciate your reference there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and, and you know, the, the importance of being able to, uh, bring this particular item. I'm trying to remember, Pat, where we met on another meeting, talking about our climate action and adaptation plan. And I'm, I, I don't remember because, um, there's a few meetings that we've had, 1T, 1TrillionTrees.org, I'm not too sure. But I really love the approach that this particular alliance is taking because I have always said, um, that climate change and clean water, clean air are not just the responsibility of government, that we all have to bite into it, and that we all have responsibility, uh, to, to have, you know, to have good climate and livable communities and, and clean, clean air and clean water. So, it aligns, uh, very well with, uh, with the new approach that we must take, um, here in the City of Tucson, but also throughout the state, uh, that we have to leave our silos, uh, and leave our sport, sports rivalries, uh, to the side and work together for a better Arizona. So, uh, with that, I'd like to make sure that we, uh, move forward with the vote. And I don't know if we need a roll call, uh, Mr. Clerk, or just a voice vote? So, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Do we have a motion made, Madam Mayor?
Yes. There's a motion in a second. Any opposed?
No. Congratulations. Good job. We kept moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Fimbros. Thank you so much, Pat, and I appreciate you coming to our council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Please add the City of Tucson in that list.
All right, we will. All right. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you all. Um, so, item eleven. Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled, uh, meeting will be on Tuesday, February ninth, at 5:30 PM. With that, everyone, thank you so much, and Happy Inauguration Day.
Good night, everyone.
Have a nice rest of your week.
Oh, my God!